That's not rated for wet locations. Again, the soffits are still unsealed on other parts of the structure itself. More electrical that's been exposed to the weather and the elements for a period of time. Most of the siding has begun to buckle on all of its edges. Needs to be replaced. It's in violation of ordinance for siding on the exteriors of structures. More photos of the siding.
Are those recent, Mike?
This is taken within just a little over a week ago. This is the means of egress to the lower unit. That's just been boarded up since that timeframe or thereafter. More electrical. This is just a photo that shows the state of the interior. So basically in oh four, the rough inspections were done on this property. That's pretty much where things stopped. If you look closely, it's just drywalled. None of the drywall's been finished or taped. No, the trim has ever taken place. So basically this this property has never received a certificate of occupancy. It's been sitting vacated for approximately eighteen years plus. So with the deterioration of the outside, it started getting a lot of complaints and it was tagged as a public nuisance. Basically, it didn't have any means of egress, you know, that was suitable for habitation anyway, aside from the point that it has never received a certificate of occupancy. So in the initial notification process, which was issued in November of twenty twenty one, it stated that once the permits were issued, the work should be completed within a hundred and eighty days. That's six months. It was about a six month period from the first notification period until they pulled the permits, which was in May of twenty twenty two. A hundred and eighty days has passed and at that point in time, as of a week ago, on this particular structure, only the roof had been replaced. Now, there's been some activity at the property within the last week here, but it's still not complete or up to all the issues that we have with the property. Basically, you know, it brings into question the validity of the permit. You know, the issuance of a permit doesn't allow anyone to not follow any other codes or ordinances of the city of Bellevue. So basically this being a public nuisance, it was brought forward as uninhabitable in a timeframe set by ordinance of a hundred and eighty days. That's come and gone. So at that point in time, the premise can become invalid. I think the the objective is is to try to get a good timeframe on this thing and either bring it up to current code or make a decision.
Just an observation, I just noticed on your video above the soffits, it looked like the the roof sheeting was rotted. Did they put the new roof over that or?
Now, a lot of times, you know, as they age, they'll turn color like that. As long as it's stable, it did go through, the roof went through an inspection process, so it was stable.
So it looked worse than it was there?
Yep. But you know, with the soffits being open like that, there's all kinds of possibility that birds and other rodents have found their way into the attic area. So that might need to be addressed also.
So are there raccoons and stuff in there? Do you notice any wildlife?
You know, hard to be hard to say about a raccoon as far as, you know, I don't know that there's any overhanging trees that they could drop from, but you know, mice and stuff can climb vertical block and walls.
Any other questions for Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, if I understood you right, this all started in two thousand?
As a project, yes.
And there's never been a occupancy permit issued for this side?
No, it never went through its final inspections. Like I said, in oh four were the last inspections that were recorded and those were for rough inspections.
If any work was done recently, was it done with or without a permit?
As I stated earlier, he pulled a permit in May.
Okay.
Based under the notification process and a hundred and eighty days to complete the work.
Thank you.
Councilman Watch?
Okay, so I gotta get some timelines clear in my head, Mike. So they initially asked to build this property in two thousand and then it was not, it was to this point in two thousand four, correct? Where it stands right now. And then from two thousand four till your notification to them in twenty twenty one, there was little or no activity that was done on this property.
It was never completed, correct?
And now you notify them and some work is being done, but not not to the point of being able to make it habitable.
I guess the neglect of the outside and, you know, the decay of the means of egress brought it back to the radar, you know, to approach that it was becoming a public nuisance or is a public nuisance. And the fact that the certificate of occupancy has never been issued for the property. So
So they basically had seventeen years to get this thing, to get the certificate of occupancy and nothing happened until they got back on the radar and then some things started happening.
You know, at the conception of construction, you know, everything was new and it probably wasn't that big of a eyesore at that point in time, but as it deteriorated over the timeframe, it became one.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mike? Thank you, Mike. Public hearings open. Is there anyone like would like to speak regarding fourteen A? Please come forward. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's open. Just state your name and address and sign in, please.
Good evening. My name is Steve Hurl, but I'm here to speak in reference to not only this dwelling on sixteen eleven Franklin Street, but also an upcoming, which will be the next point of issue, I believe, for sixteen oh seven Franklin. And also, I'm also here speaking on behalf of my mom, Rita Hurl, but who is the successor trustee for these dwellings. Before I get started here, I do have some current picture packets that I would like to, I've got enough for the councilman, the administrator and the mayor that if I could give to you that you could pass out. What what you have there is current pictures as of yesterday of both both dwellings that show that what work has been accomplished, especially for the infractions that came out on the letters that we received from the city of Bellevue, putting this into both dwellings into a red tag issue. As you can see, a lot of the issues have already been resolved and the remainder are in in process of being completed for these infractions that have come into play. For example, on sixteen eleven, you can see where the the front railings, guardrail steps have been replaced. Siding issues have been resolved. The electrical, exposed electrical outlets have been weather sealed and weather properly sealed and covered. The other issue, there was an issue regarding a non-dwelling structure that was in the back that did not meet code for appearance or and or location. That also, as you can see by the photos listed there, primarily on the photos like taken on for sixteen oh seven, that has all been resolved and corrected. I won't get into sixteen oh seven right now because we're on to the sixteen eleven. But in regards to the permit process, initially, my dad started this project, yes, in two thousand. In two thousand two, he was laid to rest. So I took over and started with the work with to to complete this structure and to get it back into operation and to finish it. Well, in the meantime, not only did Murphy's Law come into play, but I went through a very extensive, nasty, very lengthy, as a five year long divorce that I went through, that slowed work up onto that. Not only did we have that issue, we've had other health issues. And at like Mike had already mentioned, a complete construction package was reestablished and purchased in May for all facets of work, building, electrical, mechanical, plumbing. I might have left one out, but a complete building package was reestablished and purchased for this sixteen eleven. Also, in in the timeframe of of this, we not only experienced two tornadoes, which I don't know if how many remember, we've had an EF one and an EF two hit us in two thousand seventeen that destroyed a lot of our home and where we live. We live down south of Bellevue on a farm and I farm also. We had that to contend with. Then in nineteen, we've had historic flooding that both my home and contents and my mom's was completely destroyed. We've had to reestablish and rebuild for that. So I I'm not standing here trying to come up with excuses. I'm just giving where we are, what what we've experienced and and I'm also here to also reassure you that that's why this permit package was bought and and purchased. So then we would have current permits to be able to finish this structure out and go further on down the line here. Plus, with this being said, inspections have occurred. From what I interpret and what I have read in the administrative code of nineteen ninety seven, which I believe the city follows, as long as the work has commenced within a hundred and eighty days and work continues with current inspections being held, that permit or those permits remain active and current. Is that a correct statement, Mike?
Under new construction, if a person comes forward for new construction, that's a true statement. This was brought forward by city ordinance. The city ordinance puts a timeframe of when they want these repairs established. There was a hundred and eighty days given in the notification process, which is six months. So in reality, the the ordinance applies and not a normal permit. Had Steve come in on his own probably ahead of this and it didn't go to the point of being a public nuisance and going through ordinance, that would apply. But when you go through the public nuisance and the ordinance and the repairs are requested to be repaired, a timeframe is given, a reasonable timeframe, and a reasonable timeframe is six months. I mean, they can build across the way in Jefferson Place, a brand new place from the foundation all the way to completion in eight months. I think we can repair these in six months. So I think at this point, it's a matter of the urgency. No one's, you know, trying to not allow Steve to repair these properties, but the neighbors and the complaints just keep coming and, you know, why, why aren't these properties fixed in the time we met?
But as you can, as you can see by by these packets, the the first thing that I felt that was important to address all these infractions that were laid out in the in the letters that came from the city, which caused it to be red tagged, which at this point, I believe I'm I'm to a point on sixteen eleven to get inspection on all these infractions that caused it to be red tagged initially. And as you can see on the the photos, and I will jump ahead a little bit on sixteen oh seven, that for those that haven't been completed, the remainder is in progress and can be seen by the photos and will be completed. We we wouldn't have went to the expense and the effort to spend thousands of dollars to buy the permits, materials, labor and such to get to this point, to to get this these issues resolved if we weren't serious and and committed to resolving all these problems. This isn't, if we if we were just going to leave the city high and dry and walk away, we wouldn't, I wouldn't have spent, we wouldn't have spent the the money, we wouldn't have spent the the time, the effort in to to get to this point to begin the repairs. Yes, I I I will say that it has been a long time, an extended time, but there's been a lot of circumstances that have come into this play that some of them were out of our control. And the ones that we could control, that's why we reestablished the permits to be able to get back online. And that is something that I wasn't aware of at the time until I talked to Mike just recently that when a permit is pulled, like for a red tag issue or something of that, that does not fall under a normal permitting process as like Mike said, new construction. Where you pull your permit, as long as the work commences within a hundred and eighty days, work continues. You get inspections throughout this time that keeps your permit package active and current. I was not aware that this type of, when I repurchased this entire construction package on this dwelling on sixteen eleven, that I had a hundred and eighty days drop dead, pardon the pun, but a drop dead date of a hundred and eighty days. No matter if inspections were occurred, which there has been inspections on this on this dwelling also for new construction and construction processes that have went on. But with that being said, I didn't realize and I wasn't informed or notified saying, okay, now, these, you've got a hundred and eighty days, that's it. No more, no less. No matter if inspections are being done, you've, that's all you've got because this is not a normal construction process that you're going in. You're going into a repair process, which that was a major misunderstanding that I that I had and didn't realize. As you can see, and and Mike has said, both of these structures have had new roofs put on to them and were inspected and approved. That wasn't something that was on these letters for infractions that were included. That was just something that we felt that we needed to do just for improvements and betterment of these two properties. Getting back to where where I would wanted to continue on here is is I am here tonight to ask for a continuance to finish addressing these infractions that have occurred and that are listed out on the letters that we receive from the city of Bellevue. And I am very confident that all these infractions can be finalized, addressed, completed, inspected by March thirty first to at least address all the issues that are pertaining and concerned with the red tagged issues. Then that would allow me to then continue and get back in one hundred percent and concentrate on and concentrate on completing the structure, which is still in, in drywall form on sixteen eleven. Also, just a side note, uh, on the sixteen oh seven, which we will get to, which is right next door, all these apartments that are in this structure are all very habitable right now currently. And once the red tag issues are resolved, those are removed, those apartments are ready to be reoccupied once the, the red tags come off the doors because all the, uh, safety of egress purposes, siding issues, garage issues, those will all have been resolved because all those are listed out in, into the infractions that were on the red tag listings. I know a lo- a lot of you, uh, or some of you here tonight don't, don't know me per se, don't know my background, don't know my family and their background, but we're a small family operation that has been in Bellevue doing business since the early eighties. This is something that we've had, uh, a- association, many, many meetings with Bellevue, many, uh, conjoining, uh, uh, workings with, uh, from Bellevue, uh. I'm standing here telling you that and assuring you that I stand behind my work. If, if I'm, if I'm saying that I'm going to complete this and get it done, it will be done, it will be accomplished and it will be done by code and by proper, proper, uh, construction processes. I'm not here to, uh, lay out something that I'm not going to stand behind. Again, there are some officials here that I have worked with in the past that can attest that if I, if I agree and, and say that I'm going to do something, unless I drop over, I will accomplish and do what I'm set out to do and what I've said to do. That's something that I've always prided myself on and our family has prided ourselves on. When we tell the cities that we're going to do something or this is how we're going to do it or when we're going to do it, we do our very best to fulfill that and uphold what we say. And a, and again, it's, it's, it's something that, uh, has went longer than what it should. But again, there's been a lot of factors that have come into play that if I could turn back time, some of them could be resolved, some of them couldn't. But it's something that, that's life and you do the best that you can as you go, no matter what comes at you or what you have to deal with. And that's where I'm at right now, that I'm, I, I do have full commitment to fulfill, first of all, to get rid of the red tags off of these two structures by fulfilling the infractions. Move on from there to where then I can get in and finish up the drywalling and be able to get the cabinetry set for the structure here, uh, the dwelling here on sixteen eleven, which is in construction that you have up on the screen here currently. But at, at this time, that's, that's, uh, until we probably get into the, the next screens, that's pretty much what, what I have to say, what I have to assure the council where I'm at. And again, I was not aware of, of the, uh, different permitting process because of the package that was bought for sixteen eleven, the complete package for all facets of work. I was not aware that I had a hundred and eighty-day drop dead. I thought it was the standard proceed, uh, permitting process that's listed out in, in the process in the administrative code of nineteen ninety-seven that the city follows. I, and that, that is another factor that, uh, has caused us to be at this point and me here at this meeting. So at this point, I, I.
I, I, I hear what you're saying. So March thirty-one, you're asking till March thirty-one to get those items listed on the
All the infractions.
On the infractions.
To get rid of the red tags.
What about finishing the properties? I mean, what's your goal? Is it going to be yours or?
No, 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 I will continue in. Uh, the two upper units, uh, are all rocked out, uh, and, and most of it is taped. The lower unit, it's a three-plex, a triplex. The lower unit has just, I had just started rocking downstairs, so it needs to be finished, rocked out, taped, and then cabinetry needs to be set, once the rocking's done.
I mean, I, you, we had one of your properties before in the last four years that I remember that you did take care of and you did everything you said you were going to do. I just want to make sure um, you're, you're doing what the council expects, I guess. So I guess what's your goal to have, or when, when can you say you have those properties all, all done for occupancy to?
Sixteen oh seven by March thirty-first. I'll have sixteen oh seven ready to reoccupy because then the red tags will be off. Sixteen eleven will be a little longer because I've got, uh, drywalling, I've got cabinetry to set. Uh, some of the fixtures, uh, the plumbing fixtures, uh, all the tub shower units are already set. Uh, furnaces are all set for the mechanical. The remaining mechanical that's left is, is stools, vanities and, and, uh, the water heaters. And then the cabinetry, of course, for the kitchen.
So sixteen eleven, what do you think you can get that done by?
Well, I, I hadn't, I hadn't thought about that because I was under the impression of as long as I kept getting work, continuing the work and getting inspections on work that is, is being accomplished because all the rough end, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, the rough ends have all been achieved, passed and approved. So then I was in the finishing process when all heck breaks loose in my life. Uh, so that's where we're at on that to where, uh, you know, I'm just down to the finishing on, on the inside. But for infractions to be able to get the tags, especially for sixteen eleven, those, those apartments are ready to reoccupy soon as them tags come off. So that structure will be addressed up to code, ready to go on that. And then, like I said, then I want to get full, full bore and, and to get these rocked out, taped out, get the, the remaining, uh, plumbing fixtures that need to be done, set, and then get the cabinetry and then I'm ready for, because that's all that's left is finish work and then getting an occupancy permit and then get, of course, final mechanical, electrical and plumbing once everything is set in, in, in operation because water is already there. Sewer, we've, we've, we've continued to pay water, sewer, gas, all, all the utilities are all in. Those furnaces have run and kept the unit because there is water in those units. So that's something that has been maintained, that I've been very strenuous about to maintain heat to where we, we didn't have broken and frozen pipes. Uh, I, I did hear something about, uh, rodents and stuff. Yes, the, the soffits haven't been closed in with the venting and the soffits, but we've not had knock on wood, we have not had no issues with vermits, varmits, animals, birds, squirrels, whatever, inside this unit.
So I don't know what the council will do, but, um, is there a commitment you could make on sixteen eleven as far as timeframe?
If I could, if I could keep, I know Mike said that it, it, it's a different process because of how, what I, where we're at in the type of package that I could do, as long as if, if what I'm getting at is, or going back to is, if I could stay with a standard permit process, I can fulfill this within the standard permit process that normally would go on. Because this, even though there wasn't a, a certificate of occupancy given on this, in my mind or in my, in my feel, this is still under con- new construction. This is still being constructed from the get-go. This is not a remodel scenario. This is not a, well, I want to change this, I want to customize this. This is still in the process from the original construction. So that's why I took the permitting process and thought it was a standard permitting process, which yes, you've got, the work needs to commence within a hundred and eighty days and work needs to continue with current inspections that need to keep going and that's what keeps the permits active and current. I was not aware that because this was a remodel type or, or a, or a.
I think we understand that. I mean, I, I think we understand what you're saying there.
So that, if, if I could stay with that, I don't have a problem staying within, within the legal guidelines.
So a hundred and eighty days from Mar- the end of March thirty-first, so the end of the year?
I, I, I would think that that could be comfortably, uh, uh, achieved, yes, to, to finish up uh, and have, uh, an occupancy permit achieved for sixteen eleven.
Okay, just, just my, my history on it. I've, um, the public contacts us, I mean, all the council members, I mean, they all have different people contact them, but I take so much, uh, we got some new construction going on, on, down by Washington Park. We've got it going on, on the end of Jefferson Street. Um, and the comments people are saying, well, you're never get those products done. You can't even get those townhomes done. They've been there for twenty years. I mean, the public is really scrutinize the city on, on how we're how we're handling that situation with, with the townhomes. Um, so it, I mean, I, it comes to me. I don't know if anybody else gets those calls, but, um, it, it, it's ongoing for the city. So we, we're trying to, we're trying to do what's right. Oh, I guess, what's another question I have? This market we're still in, this real estate market, I mean, if, if it's too much, there are, there are people, contractors that are flipping houses and they're paying top dollar for those. Have you, have you thought about turning them over to somebody or?
That's something that, uh, we, we may, we may entertain at a, at a later point, but my, my goal was, i- is and was to finish them up and, and get them to where they are ready for, uh, certificate of occupancy and, and to uh, get them, get them ready to occupy. Uh, I, I, I kind of wonder, I'm just throwing it out there, you know, some of the concerns and calls, were they and are they coming because of like the front, like you, you saying the, the, the steps uh, that were, uh, in bad condition, uh, that Mike had up there? And, and some of these siding issues, which, uh, on like on sixteen eleven have been resolved. Uh, some of these issues that are more eyesores and like the, the, the garage on sixteen oh seven, that's as you can see by the, in the packet, that garage is nearing completion on being sighted and done. By addressing some of these visual issues, I would think that that would ease up and, and, and give the neighborhood, okay, look, they, they got this done, the, the new steps, the guardrails, uh, there, there's activity, they got the garages taken care of.
It should ease, it should ease up, but it's on everybody's radar. I mean, they know they're there.
Well, and with the, with the Jefferson place going on, there, there's, there's a lot of eyes and a lot of people, a lot of interest in that little corner. And it, yes, that hasn't helped us, uh, but now that some of these physi- or of, of these visual things have been addressed to where they look more presentable, more like uh, somebody's ready to walk into them and start living, uh, I would think that that could and would help, uh, a lot of the, the issues that the, the neighbors have. Uh, the, the thing is, uh, I've got neighbors on the north and the south of each of these structures and we've never heard nothing. We, we're, I'm on very good terms with them. They've always complimented uh, on keeping things mowed, not letting grass get tall, keeping the snow moved. Uh, it, it's, it's, it isn't like we, we've got neighbors on each side that are saying, boy, I wish them, them places were gone. I mean, it, it isn't, it isn't like, uh, we don't care because we do care. Otherwise, I wouldn't be standing here if we didn't care and we weren't committed to finish what we started.
Councilwoman Watson, I'll let somebody else.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so when you got, Mr. Herbert, when you got this, um, permit package, that was May of what year?
Twenty-two.
Okay. And you talk about reoccupy on this? These have never been occupied, correct?
No, no, on sixteen oh seven, the one next door.
Has been occupied.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
We've, we've, we established that back in the mid-eighties and built that in the mid-eighties. That's been rented out since on sixteen oh seven. Sixteen eleven has never been finished because it was in construction. It's never received a certificate of occupancy. Sixteen oh seven next to it has had the certificate of occupancy and has been rented. So like I said, we built that and established that in the, in the mid-eighties.
Okay, I guess I was under the impression they were both built at the same time?
No.
Am I incorrect on that, Mike?
The north one, uh, sixteen oh seven was built prior to this one.
Okay, and it was occupied, but it's no longer occupied?
It is not occupied right now because of the red tags. So we can't, we couldn't occupy.
Was there people in it prior, there was nobody living in it prior to the red or during the red tags?
Not during, no.
Okay. Um, Mike, has Mr. Herbert been in constant communication with you during this timeframe or is it? To me, it feels like the only reason that there is a sense of urgency on this property is because we're here today. I mean, I'm in real estate and I don't know of one homeowner that would wait twenty-two, twenty-three years to be able to get into a property. So the deal where you say that we should continue this on is new construction, that ship has sailed because new construction is eight months, a year, maybe si- eighteen months, but that's about it. And I, are you the only family member that can work on this property?
Well, I'm the one that, uh, I've, I'm the one in charge, yes, on, on behalf of my mom. My mom is.
I understand, but are you the only one that works on it?
No, we, I have subcontractors, I mean, but I'm the one in, in charge of making, making things happen.
And I understand you went through some difficult times. Uh, our entire city went through difficult times with the tornadoes and the flooding, but twenty-three years, I'm, I'm real, I'm, I'm really having difficulty with this and I'm trying to be compassionate to what your situation was. But the timeframe has extended and it feels like the only reason that this is even getting attention is because the Jefferson project that we caught a lot of heat because this property was not um, lived in and it was, you know, brought to our attention. And then it feels like we bring it to your attention and you work on it to kind of get it up to the point that we don't have it on attention again and then it drops off and then it comes back to our attention and then you give it more attention.
Well, since, with, with all due respect, uh, ma'am or Kathy, work, once these permits were obtained for both structures to fulfill the red-tagged issues on sixteen oh seven and buy a new permit package for sixteen eleven, work has continued on this. It isn't that, uh, I've just went there and, uh, did or a little bit of work has went on or we put a new roof on and then, then we disappear for months.
How long has sixteen oh seven been vacant?
Probably the last tenant, I don't have the exact.
Ballpark it.
Probably a year or two be- prior to that. Because it was to a point that I, we knew that we needed to do these repairs.
So Mike, the pictures that you showed of the inside, is that of the?
That's sixteen eleven.
Sixteen eleven?
Sixteen eleven, that is the basement area, correct, or the lower level.
And we don't have any interior pictures of, uh, anything in sixteen oh seven, correct?
No, I'm confident that it is habitable on the inside. The ex- the means of egress, et cetera, and the deterioration of the outside is what the placard.
Okay, and, and in your professional opinion?
Mike, can you step up the?
In, in your professional opinion, how long would it be re- if, if the extension was given, how long of time should this thing be done?
You need to bring some crews in and finish the project. Um, only commercial white box finishes are unfinished inside and that's for commercial tenants to come in and choose what they want to place in those buildings. Anytime you do a residential property is to be completed to habitable form. So basically this needs to come back into, or not come back into, be made habitable and the construction finished. Most homes are built well within a year.
Okay, but for this one to get to the point where if, if you hired crews to do this, what's the timeline that both of these would be habitable?
I mean, a siding crew can come in within a week and reside that house. I mean, that's just an example.
Okay.
Steve's been working on the on the porches, I, you see pictures of the porches, but it's just been Steve working on it. There needs to be crews brought in. To get some urgency on this to bring these into habitable form.
Okay, that's all I have at the moment.
Councilman Burns.
Steve, I just have a couple questions. Um, I know Mr. Christiansen just said that crews need to be brought in and will you be bringing crews in? Um, to sh- to sh- sort of expedite the the process?
Bring it, I will, I will be establishing rock and crews and tape and crews developer to do expedite and and get this. Finished up to where then of final fixtures and cabinetry then can be set, yes.
Okay, and then can you just clarify for me? I know we're talking specifically about sixteen eleven and not sixteen oh seven. Um, but in regards to sixteen eleven, how much time do you need to do all of that realistically for you? I mean, what do you think is a a real timeline? I I just don't know if I was, I understood. I think Mayor Hyde did ask, but I.
Sound like the end of two thou- the end of this year would be enough to get both of them done.
Because right, right now, I I I I've talked to a couple drywall companies, but I've not talked to any others. At this point, because again, until I just recently here was I informed of. One hundred and eighty days, period. It it is, it's this sixteen eleven permit process is not a standard permit process. That I'm, that I fell into. So this is something that uh will. Has changed the the game plan here to where then. I will have to get, I, you know, I will get the crews in there, but uh. I would think by by the end of the year, yes. I I I've, I feel that that's confident. I mean, and and the thing is, the outside issues that that has caused it to be placarded uh. Are are addressed and ready for inspection to at least address that. So then it. Comes off of being placarded and then it goes back into being under construction.
Okay, um, and then. I'm I'm gonna kind of re-ask Councilwoman Welch's question to Mr. Christiansen. Do you, can you give us, so if one hundred and eighty days is six months, um, just specifically speaking about sixteen eleven. Can you give us i- in months? What, in your professional opinion, uh, what is realistic?
A hundred and eighty days on top of what we've already done is sufficient.
More than.
If you bring in the proper crews to to do the, do the work. Will be a year, twelve months since the first in May, since the permits were pulled to bring this back into habitable form. That's a full year. Most new homes are built within a year's time.
So if yours, if you were to say, hey, I'm willing to give this much time, extra time, you know, for this structure. You, what do you, what do you, what would you do that? You know, if you made the decision, what would? Would you say we'll give thirty days, sixty days, ninety days?
I mean, Mayor was talking toward the end of the year. Quite frankly, I don't think it needs to go that long. Hundred and eighty days is more than sufficient.
So would your recommendation for this specific one be a hundred and eighty days?
You should be able to finish.
And that would be August?
Yes.
Okay, and then um, just to play a little bit of, just to kind of be kind of an uh, maybe, I don't know, devil's advocate. I know that the property's been sitting um this way twenty, twenty-three years, at least sixteen eleven if I'm. Um, how, has has the city approached um? Steve or his mom within that timeframe prior to this?
As I stated earlier, you know, it was new construction and in oh four, the outside was relatively new and good shape. And so there were no, you know, telltales about anything else going on. There was a different building official. Uh, in charge of the permit department in Bellevue at that particular time and uh several different inspectors did the inspections on it. Um, it wasn't till, you know, the depreciation of the exterior over the eighteen year old, eighteen year period brought it back on the radar and. It was established that it never had received a certificate of occupancy.
Okay, so, um, and then um. Okay, no, that those, those are my questions for now. So thank you. I appreciate you both, okay?
Couple of comments or questions. Uh, so first of all, it's unfortunate we got to where we are today, but but here we are. And I appreciate the fact that you came before us and and shared what you're doing and and your goals. Um, I think we all have the same goal, or at least I hope the same as yours, to remove an eyesore. Uh, and it has been an eyesore and I'm one of the folks who have gotten complaints and I've shared that with you, Steve, uh, that being the ward representative. Um, my my fear is that the deterioration is maybe more extensive than than what you think it is. Um, and I've talked to Mr. Christiansen. I went up, I've been up there probably four times, five times. I went up right before the meeting today. And I still see a lot of things that I'm not a inspector, I have no clue, but just from looking at it, it looks like there's, there's quite a bit more to do. And as the mayor alluded to and and Mr. Burns is uh. I would like to see the entire project done, both units. I know we're talking about uh this one now, but both of them done in a reasonable time. And and I would agree that I think a year or taking it to then a year is probably too long. So I I guess my question is, are you willing to commit to finish both of these proj- projects, both of these uh townhomes? And make them uh habitable in one hundred and eighty days?
Well, the sixteen oh seven will be habitable uh as soon as the these infractions are done for the steps and stairs. And like I said, the inside is ha- very habitable right now. So sixteen oh seven will come off the radar. As soon as the red tags come off of the doors on sixteen eleven, sixteen eleven or and then, excuse me, six. Sixteen oh seven will come off of the radar once the tags are removed off because those are ready to be reoccupied. Sixteen eleven, I can, I can, I can live with this, that one hundred and eighty days. I can make it happen to where we'll be ready for an occupancy inspection within the right by that one hundred and eighty days.
So obviously there'll be a vote here at some point. Uh, I can personally live with that, but I I, as I shared with you on the phone, I I think when you make that commitment. That is a commitment that you have to live to and you have to understand what what would happen if you don't make that commitment that.
Right, and it and it's something that, that's why I'm here. It it's, it's something that I do not want to to get to that point. Sixteen oh seven can be back, ready to be reoccupied. By the March thirty first that I was saying where or or sooner, as soon as the infractions are inspected. That property is done and off the radar. Then all I've got then is sixteen eleven to finish up, to get. Exterior, uh, the soffits addressed, finish up the the finish work on the inside, the the drywalling, fixtures. And get an occupancy permit and then that's off the, then that's off the radar because once the certificate of occupancy is achieved.
Under- understand.
Where where the the issues, the problems done.
Alright, thank you.
So what happens if, oh, sorry, what happens if um? I mean, we give the one hundred and eighty days and then one hundred and eighty days passes and he's not done. I mean, he's a little bit closer. Um, I ju- the the buildings to me, I, they look like they can be redone, livable. Uh, it'd be a shame if we voted to condemn them and tear them down. I've got a handful, I got a half a dozen. Investors that just do this. They would go in, buy them and they'd be done with that place in ninety days and flip them. Um, so. Hundred and eighty days, I think, is very um doable, but I guess uh if we extend that.
And I'm, and I'm agreeing to that also. That that's not something that I'm contesting or saying, oh, that that I, you know. I'm, I'm stating that 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 is doable. Yes, it is.
Mr. Mayor, what about the opportunity that this is postponed for a month? And Mike has given access to this property with with Steve to see the status and we get an update in thirty days. On this and if it's not where we think it, or Mike thinks that it needs to be, then we could exercise something quicker if we need to.
Not doable.
That motion could be made to continue this to um whatever meeting next month, so it would be.
But that would give us an update as, you know, Mike would have access to the properties. He could advise us that. Yep, the work is is continuing. We've gotten it done, you know, Mr. Steve has done what he said that he's gonna do. He's, he's this close to it. Or nope, I haven't seen anything done or oh my gosh, he's got way more work that needs to be done and there is no way he can get it done. Because I'm also concerned with you being a farmer, spring comes along, you get busy.
Well, I have worked full time. I I have been uh not only farm, but I have been.
But the point is you're.
Superintendent for uh Kiwet Construction.
The point is you're busy, is is what I'm saying.
We all are busy, Kathy, but I will do what I need to do to fulfill what I have said. So those structures can remain and don't come in front of of a vote for condemnation.
I just feel like we've given more than enough time and there needs to be a real strong sense of urgency that get this done. Or there are consequences.
I don't know, it's legal, but I would like to see that they're occupied at the end of one hundred and eighty days or ready for occupancy, not just at a. A better stage, so, and I don't know how you do that.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying that, you know, maybe he gives, uh, Mike can give us an update in thirty days as to where this property is at and is that one hundred and eighty days realistic or? No, it's way more and then we gotta move on this quicker.
I'm gonna let uh Councilman Preister jump in. I think he's got a couple of things.
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, could you tell me procedurally what you would need if we? Didn't do the condemnation tonight and did want to extend it, be it thirty days or sixty days to see progress? What, would you issue a different permit? Would a new one have to be applied? Procedurally, what works for permits and inspection?
I mean, we have the permits on file, yeah, you know, the one hundred and eighty days was put in per ordinance because the timeframe has to be set, so that could be extended. Another additional one hundred and eighty days if you so choose to do so.
Okay, or any amount less than one hundred and eighty days?
Correct, and and we keep going back and forth between two different properties, sixteen oh seven and sixteen eleven are. Quite a bit different, as in sixteen eleven has never received a certificate of occupancy. There's a great deal more of work to be done. Whereas sixteen oh seven does does not, but I have a short video of that property also for the next uh presentation.
And it would be okay to extend it for, say, sixty days and get a progress report? And make a decision rather than starting out with a full one hundred and eighty days?
If the council chooses to do that, that would, that would work also.
Okay, because I I'm feeling too like other people have expressed that this has gone on for the neighbors. Far too long and I'm clear on the other side of town and like others, I've gotten complaints about the property. And so when it's all across town, it's reached a pretty high level over a pretty long period of time. So I'm not comfortable extending this real long when I think contractors can be hired and gotten in. And the work can get done and not slow progress, but quick progress. Which would also mean you get renters in, you start getting some income back to pay all the expense. I'm assuming the property tax is still paid, that you're still mowing and snow as you mentioned. But you gotta recoup some, some revenue to keep all this going, so hopefully it can get done quickly and. I think I'm ready to make a motion for uh ninety days.
Let's see where we're at. That's uh, we gotta wait till we move to fourteen A one, so I gotta close public hearing yet, so. Good. Any other questions?
I'd like to follow up on on both the suggestions and get Mr. Christiansen's input on. I know you said it's a hard decision, but your professional opinion. Do periodic checks along the way or would you just go with one hundred and eighty days?
It would be, in this circumstances, as Mayor spoke, you know, if, you know, we get to the point of one hundred and eighty days and it's still not done, you know, but we've come. Eighty percent, do we want to tear down a building at that point? Whereas if that decision to tear this building down were made in thirty or sixty days. It would be an easier decision that it's not making the progress that it should.
Thank you. Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so Mike, let me understand. You're saying we sh- we could just extend the current pa- permits? That were issued back in, I think, May?
Correct.
And that would pretty much cover everything for him to then move forward with work to get an occupancy permit? I mean, all the permits are already there and we're gonna, we're probably make a motion that we, do we need a motion to extend them one hundred and eighty days?
Whatever, sixty days or?
Or, or, yeah, um. And. I had another question, I just draw the, I know he mentioned a com- an issue about the taxes being paid. I would just ask that the family check into that.
They are, I believe that we, that uh, there's current that is due, but there, there is no. To my knowledge, there is no tax sale or anything on this, on either one of the properties.
I I I know we're not here for that. And and I I don't really want to get into it, but I would just, I'm asking you or your mom as the property owners to please check. On the tax situation.
That that will, that that has been and and will be kept current just like all our other property is.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mike or Steve? Okay, the public hearing is still open on fourteen A. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak regarding fourteen A? Please come forward if there is.
Mr. Mayor. I just went to sarpy dot com on uh sixteen eleven twenty-two.
I don't know if we want to discuss it, if it's.
They're not current at the moment.
Okay, just, alright. Um, so fourteen A, anybody else want to speak regarding fourteen A? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing on fourteen A. Moves me to fourteen A one, resolution number two zero two three dash zero two. Condemning the structures at sixteen eleven Franklin Street, Bellevue, Nebraska, six eight oh oh five. And I'll look for a motion. Councilman Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I would be willing to make a motion to extend the permit for ninety days. With the report back to the council in thirty days and in sixty days to assess progress.
I believe you need to make a motion to continue this resolution to to the hearing that you want it to be heard. Um, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but then the permitting extension would be handled with you in your office?
Correct.
So we are looking at the meeting on May second, continue it to May second.
Second. So Councilman Preister, does that mean did we still get a thirty day update, a sixty day update and a ninety day update? Can we also add on there that the, if the taxes are behind that they are in fact brought up, brought up to date? Can we add that as a part of it or not?
I don't think we can add that as part of this.
Okay.
But we can certainly encourage it because that's a major factor.
I'll just state for the record, so the question of condemnation condemnation is is on the basis of what? This property owner was notified as the defects in the property and so um things such as taxes. That wouldn't be something that you would consider when making a decision if you're going to approve the resolution.
Fair enough, thank you.
Thank you. So a motion by Preister, second by Burns to continue. Resolution two zero two three dash oh two to March second with a review by Mike. Um, at thirty days and sixty days for an update on the condition. May second, is that what I said? Okay. Continuation to May second. Any questions on that motion? Okay, please vote.
Councilman Casey, as yours going through for you?
Councilman Casey, is yours going through for you? Oh, there it is. All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 14B, show cause hearing on the proposed condemnation of the structures at 1607 Franklin Street, Bellevue, Nebraska, 68005. And I will open up 14B for public hearing. If there's anything else to add, I'll mark Mike started off.
I do have a short video that I would like to show you as to why we're here. This is on 1607. So, the stairs were replaced here recently. They have not gone through inspection to date. But again, here, we have more siding, siding issues on 1607. Some just patches horizontally put on, some of the holes that were in the structure. Sofits need repairing also.
And this is the one that was habitable, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Window seals are deteriorated and rotten. There was construction started on the rear deck for the egress out the rear. These are the garage structures that are in the rear of the property that are really deteriorated to a point where the foundation is failing on this particular one. These are all part of the infractions on this property of 1607. That garage is leaning to the west. That's the rear of the same garage. Some of the foundation blocks are all cracked on this one also, siding windows.
And this is the one he said he could have done by the end of March, just recently?
Correct.
Thank you.
This is the garage to the south. This is the means of egress to the lower two units, as it presented itself a little over a week ago. That has to be corrected also. This is a sidewalk out in the public way. It was not written up on the initial notification, but it is clearly in violation of Public Works Sidewalk Ordinance.
Questions for Mike on 1607? Councilman Preister?
Mike, this seems to need more work than the other one, and we were led to believe at least that it would be meeting code in less than two months. From the looks of those pictures, it's pretty serious damage.
They're relatively close in external, or not, yeah, external damage. You know, like I said, the plus side to this one is the interior was finished and it did receive a certificate of occupancy, I believe in the late 80s, and was occupied through the 90s.
But you haven't been inside?
But I have not been in. This was all done from the exterior side.
Right. Okay, thank you, Mike.
Okay, public hearing is open if anybody else wants to talk regarding 14B.
I'm not gonna beat a dead horse here, but I will just reiterate that the pictures that are in the packet that everybody has, you can see that the garage that he had pictures of has been recited and restabilized and structurally corrected. The, as you can see, the back landing and stairs are in progress. And then the siding issues on the south side of 1607 still need to be corrected, but those will be corrected. Like I said, again, that's what the March 31st, to have all these infractions that were listed on the letter that came out for 1607. I am very confident that all these will be addressed for 1607 by that March 31st.
And you'll be able to get an occupancy certificate on that date?
Well, there won't need to be one. It'll just be inspection of all the infractions to address that. There, because that is, and if he, Mike would like to walk through that at that point, that would be very satisfactory and acceptable, but that has already received its certificate of occupancy. The only thing that's in, the only thing that is still needing to be addressed is the infractions need to be completed and inspected to remove the red tags to then be able to reoccupy that. And that's what I was referring to that March 31st, to where them inspections on all these infractions on 1607 would be complete. And then that becomes off the radar.
Are you going to rent it at that point?
Those will be ready to re-rent and reoccupy, yes.
Councilwoman Welch?
And is that a triplex as well, Steve?
It's a fourplex.
That's a fourplex? Okay.
Any other questions for Steve? Okay, thank you. Public hearing is still open on 14B. Is there anyone else wanting to speak? Please come forward. 14B, public hearing is open. Seeing nobody, public hearing on 14B is closed. 14B1, Resolution Number 2023-03, condemning the structures at 1607 Franklin Street, Bellevue, Nebraska, 68005. Do you have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make, because I want to give Steve the benefit of the doubt. So, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone Resolution 2023-03 until our April 4th meeting, which would give him until his commitment of March 31st. Mike would be able to look at it and give us a update as to, did he get it done? Is it ready to be occupied?
Motion by Welch, second by Preister, to extend to April 4th. Any comments or questions on that? Councilman Burns?
Thank you. I just have, Annie, can I still ask Mr. Christensen questions? No, we're not. Okay. Yes, okay. I do have one question. Will you clarify the process? So, on, we'll just stick to this specific property. But we get to April 4th, let's say hypothetically, no progress has been made. Can you, and then we voted to condemn, all hypothetical. Could you explain the process so that way we're all on the same page, and we all understand the seriousness of what would happen if if we didn't meet the deadline?
If we got to the April deadline and no progress was made, it would come back before you for condemnation. If the resolution was passed and it was ordered condemned, he would have 30 days to do so, or at least have that process in play with the contractor or demo contractor.
Okay.
If not, after that 30 days, the city would remove the property.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, motion by Welch, second by Preister. Seeing no other questions from the council, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Move to 16, current business, 16A. Approve and authorize the mayor to sign the community development funding approval agreement in an amount of $353,161. Do you have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make the motion that we approve, sorry, I lost my, 16A as read.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Burns. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. 16B, approve the purchase of 15 vehicles for the public, or for the police department in an amount not to exceed $720,909? $720,909? Forgot how to read. Motion. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion to approve 16B.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch. Comments or questions? Councilman Burns?
Yep. I just have a few questions for Chief Clary. On this item, I noticed that it's not a budgeted item, so the funds aren't budgeted. But it does say the amount is expected to be covered by unspent funds in other areas of the police department or other departments. So, my first question is, is what is being cut out of the police budget to fund this purchase?
Simple answer? Nothing.
Okay.
I appreciate the questions. I appreciate them coming to me. I know you started contacting finance the day after we received notice from the Ford dealership that these were coming in before I could even talk to my boss, because he was out of touch for a while. But these vehicles were actually spoken about with the council members who were in the finance committee meeting. We had, going back since I've been here, we had $700,000 roughly in capital improvements in the budget year we're currently in. It was in the budget. We discussed it in the finance committee meeting. At the time, everybody saw the need. We actually needed 18 vehicles. When we budgeted this in a couple of years ago, $700,000 would have covered 18 vehicles. Fast forward to today, it now covers 15 due to price increases. But anyway, the decision was made at the time of budget committee to postpone the purchase until the next budget year, because at the time, we had vehicles on order that had been on order for about a year, because Ford was canceled. They had canceled over 2,000 vehicle purchases nationwide. We had vehicles on purchase that, excuse me, on order that hadn't been delivered. At the time, we looked at this for 11 months. They had no delivery date even on the map. They couldn't tell us at the time when they would be delivered. They ended up taking 16 months to deliver, so at the time we placed the order, it was decided to go ahead, because if we didn't place the order, we had about a 10-day window to place the order. If we didn't place the order, we likely wouldn't be able to order again for a year, which would put our vehicle purchase out, or delivery date about two years. When we placed the order, we didn't sign a contract. There were no agreements in place. It was simply an order that was placed with Ford locking in those prices and and starting the process. But when we did so, we believed at the time, with a knowledge available to us, that they would be delivered in the next fiscal year after October 1st. So, to answer your question, to date, as of the, at the end of January, the police department budget is over $800,000 to the good projected for the end of the year. So, as of today, it doesn't look like we'll have to cut anything, and we should be able to absorb that cost. Things can change through the budget year. I make no promises. But the city itself is $2.4 million to the good as of this point in time. Rich would attest to that. Those are his numbers. So, we're in a very good financial position to absorb this cost without cutting anything else.
Okay. Well, then my question would be though, is that if our budgets are approved and they're very specific, then I guess I'm just trying, I'm really confused. So, when you're saying that you're in the good now, but by the time we get to the October, are there like unforeseen? And so, for example, even if we got there, it does say other departments. So, are we gonna cut from Mr. Clark's department? We're gonna cut from Mrs. Palm's department? If for some reason something goes haywire, or I guess I'm just really confused. And then you said that, it says in our packet that it's not budgeted, but I don't recall it in the CIP. So, usually if we have a project and we haven't funded it, we usually roll it over. So, if it's not earmarked, why didn't we earmark it, knowing about the supply chain issues or whatever the issue may be there for whatever you guys decided to?
All I can speak to is where the budget is currently trending. Things happen. Tornadoes happen, floods happen. Large-scale events happen. I can't speak to the black swan events that could occur. All I know is where we're trending currently. As far as, it does not appear in the CIP currently. Again, it was cut last minute because we believed the vehicles would take more than that fiscal year to come in. We did place the order expecting that to occur. No agreements were signed. The purchase agreement, E-rec is done, is completed. E-rec is completed at the time that we placed the order. That is allowed. By policy, we can't sign a purchase agreement without your approval, which is, as soon as we found out those vehicles were going to be delivered earlier than expected, we brought it forward. After you started asking questions, but as soon as we possibly could to the council, we brought it forward.
So, then my next question would be is, is that at our last council meeting, the fire department, and I cannot remember the name of the apparatus, it came in front of the council, and it specifically says on our cover sheet that the item that was going to be purchased was budgeted. That was for $909,450. And they came in front of us. It was budgeted, and they asked permission prior to that with the supply chain issue. It specifically says it'll take 35 to 39 and a half months to get here. So, that's why it was so urgent, and that's why they jumped on it now. So, what's the difference between that versus this?
That's how they did that. We've, I plan to come with a purchase at the next council meeting in a similar way. We do have a command trailer that we finally got a price locked down on. And in a similar way, it will take a year to 18 months to deliver. But it looks like City Administrator Aristo wants to speak to this.
Well, the fire department, Mr. Gifford, correct me if I'm wrong, we had a 25% savings by putting that order in now. If we waited till next year, that the cost would have been 25% greater.
That is correct, because Pierce was quoting to us at the time of what they can know. In February, where it's gonna be a 7% increase at that quarter, then each quarter is gonna be a 7% projected increase in price. We locked in at this price, and the delivery is gonna be made at that date that the contract was signed. They're not gonna deliver it any earlier than that.
And did we put a deposit down on that?
No.
Exactly. And the police vehicles are, there's some other agencies that miss that 10-day window, and they won't see their cars. Our fear was that if we didn't meet that 10-day window, with the intent that it would show up into next year's budget cycle, we just placed our order. There was no commitment. You can tell, if you don't approve it, those cars will sit at Anderson Ford till somebody else buys them. So, we locked in for next year with the intent that the supply chain was gonna be delayed. It's a kind of a new environment we're living with on COVID supply chains. Am I right, Rich? We're seeing this frequently now, more so now. But there was no dollars committed, no purchase order signed.
Correct. And can I just say something? Mr. Burns, the budget for the fire truck was for the one that was delivered this year. It didn't have anything to do with the one that they came in front of you and said, "We're gonna sign this to try to lock in a price." That we expect to see in 2026. So, that issue, we thought it was a good idea to come in front of the council to commit for that one. The one that was in the budget was delivered in November, December, I think.
Okay, so there might have been some confusion on my part?
Yeah, there's just two, two different trucks.
Rich and the, and the one that's coming in 2026, we had to sign an agreement to save the cost, which we didn't have to do that with the police vehicles.
Correct.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yeah, and then just my other question is, is like the, is the vendor under the impression that the city purchased these vehicles?
Are they under the impression we're going to purchase the vehicles?
Yes.
We placed an order with them, so we're assuming that, I mean, everybody's assuming that we'll carry forward. That's the intention of the finance committee as well, when we were talking about the need. The need's been identified. We actually have a need for 18. I'm not asking for 18. We stayed in the $700,000 ballpark. If we had ordered 18, as we had projected, we'd be around $850,000. So, I wanted to stay true to the promise that we were trying to be So I wanted to stay true to the promise that we were trying to be diligent with the tax dollars. And we're gonna finagle some things around and keep a couple of vehicles around longer than intended to make sure that happens. Side note, we should realize about with. The vehicles going to auction, we're looking about two hundred thousand dollars of that money recouped through auction. As well, so. But yeah, I'm hopeful that we will approve this because like you say, finance committee had a discussion about it. They're aware of it. Unfortunately, um nobody could foresee. The shortages that trickled along after COVID etcetera that caused the havoc. In the vehicle markets. If I could have projected that, I would have bought a dozen vehicles ahead of time myself personally and made a lot of money on them. But we did what we had to do. Unfortunately, things don't necessarily align with the city of Bellevue's. Budget year, their fiscal budget year. So we made the call to do what we needed to do, so we weren't waiting three years for vehicles and. Did so within policy of the city.
So I just have a question for Annie real quick. If for some reason so vehicles are ordered, so this is almost a done deal. And let's hypothetically say we voted no. Is the city liable? If they're under the impression that the city has already purchased these vehicles and there's already been an order put in?
And speaking with Chief Clary, uh there has been no agreement that's been signed and we're not contractually bound um to these vehicles. So. Hypothetically, the city council votes no tonight. Then presumably we just communicate to the vendor that we no longer need the vehicles.
I understand there's a lot of what ifs and you said you wouldn't speak to what ifs. I'm just kinda curious. So for this is three quarters of a million dollars, which is a pretty large impact. But just in the event that there is a what if, how would you anticipate making up the funds?
That becomes a. Rich and I would be speaking. Actually, Jim Rich, the city, the directors, I'm assuming everybody would be involved in that. Discussion as to where those funds are gonna come from. I'm assuming worst case scenario. The city is in very good financial position, thankfully. That we do have the money to absorb those costs if we did do an overrun. It would take. Some work and some special meetings and testimonials, but I'm confident. We haven't overstepped ourselves from the position that I see.
What comes down to, we're seven hundred, we're that, we're that amount better off next year, next fiscal period, because we don't have that number coming out. Uh Councilman Cook.
I was just gonna make, I mean, we don't even know when they're gonna be delivered, do we?
Um, they're staggered. We we keep getting updates on the timelines. Anywhere from, well, what was two weeks ago when we've got the phone call. To four months, just depending on the. They ballpark, you put on a list, you're actually given a VIN number of what will arrive at sometime in the future and then they start trickling in. Uh, they won't come in one bunch luckily. Doug's people wouldn't appreciate it if they came in one lump, so.
And I I apologize, I I can tell you, I've been on the budget committee since we created it. Uh, and Thomas was on it there for a while. I know over the last couple of budget years, going through this COVID. These vehicles have been an issue for everybody on this, in the city. And I and I I just can't tell you, I just can't recall and I I I should have brought, I I don't know if I got notes that would. I try to take notes at those meetings, but. I I'm just saying is I think what we've, we're we're getting bumped and bumped and now he's saying I need eighteen, but give me fifteen. It's, we don't give him fifteen, we're gonna give him eighteen next year. I mean, it's, it's. We're we're getting into a thing that we're not really controlling it. The the manufacturers are, we're just not getting vehicles in a timely manner. And you you know, we sit here and we look at fifteen vehicles, but our jaws all drop when it's a fire truck. That's the same amount. Cause we need that, so. This has been an issue with the budget task force of trying. Is it NCIP? We can't get vehicles, it's out, what can we do? And I I just think the chief. Has come before us, he he he's telling us this is a need. And I know. We have other directors that could come up in front of us and they say we need a need, we do, we might turn them down, but. I think when you, when you talk about putting people in a car and getting them on the street with uh the police department. Uh, we we've increased our numbers of police officers. I think we're probably getting close to the hundred and six. I apologize for not having notes in the budget committee, but I will tell you that we've had issues during the budget committee. Of trying to put vehicles in, they're not getting them and they're taking money out and then not getting them. You know, it's just been. A couple strange years.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, so chief, when we initially talked about these vehicles timeline wise, when were we anticipating that they would? Get here before all of this came around?
Well, that's the uniqueness of all this, you know, it's an unprecedented time. We didn't even know when they were gonna open up orders. When we talked about it, we're like, I told you, we had, when the budget committee met, we were like seven, eight months into our order of the last one. I said, there's no projection of when. Those will come in and they, we don't even know when they're gonna open up ordering. The dealers were telling us when they open up ordering, be ready to order because they will take a limited number and they will close quickly. So we were watching for that and it opened and closed in about ten days. Which was between council cycles even. We wouldn't have been able to. Bring it before council in the normal way anyway. But when we did place that order, like I said, we had other vehicles on order for eleven months. When we placed that order uh with no projected arrival date. So when we asked them, well, if we order these now, when do you think we'll get them? And they said, we don't even know when you're getting the ones you have. We don't even know if you're gonna cancel those orders. They canceled two for code. That they had on order. Luckily, they didn't cancel those for us. They arrived again in sixteen months, but at the time of order, they said. Best case scenario is probably gonna be a year, it could be longer. You know, we don't know.
So we don't know if it was gonna come in this budget year, next budget year, the next, the budget year after that?
Yeah, best guess was it would take a year. That was the best guesses of the people who were making the guesses. Fast forward to December, we placed the order in September. Fast forward to December, we received those vehicles that we had ordered the October. The year before. Well, then all of a sudden in January, we get a phone call. One month later that. To start expecting arrival of the ones we had ordered a couple of months.
And the vehicles that we're getting don't go on the street immediately once we get them. They have to go to public works and be outfitted, correct?
That's correct. Yeah, it it takes a while um to cycle the new ones in. Especially when you stack them. We just received, I believe, four that Doug's people are building out. In December and now all of a sudden we're gonna start stacking vehicles behind that. It'll take several weeks, if not a couple of months to build those out once they're. Once they're received.
And obviously Mister Severson, who runs a tight ship, does very well with our. Finance and everything is on board with this um recommendation that that you've presented to us.
Yeah, and he he was involved in all of the. All of the budget meetings as well, you know, and he, I trust him, I would trust him with my mom's money. He he says this is not an issue financially. We're in, again, two point four million dollar. Good position right now. It it's not, not an issue.
Okay, and I, and then obviously Mister Risto and the mayor are all ob- obviously in compliance with it as well. Because we've got enough people looking at this saying, we can do this and it's okay. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Councilman Prester.
Chief, I I too would trust Mister Severson with your mom's money.
Yeah, I I just have some statements, cause here's the thing, I, it's not about the police cars. It's really about the process that really bothers me, which is is that there's three quarters of a million dollars. You know, it's not earmarked in the budget. However, it feels like. It's been committed. As if this this decision's already been made. And. My understanding of the process is that, okay, there's a timeline, but let's earmark it in the budget, let's approve the budget. Um, and then, you know, as we get closer to the process or or actually getting the vehicles, then you know, let's actually approve that. Um, or at least that it's committed and it's there and that that feels more transparent to me. And so this process seems backwards as if. What's the point of making this decision when it's already really been decided? And and we're not talking about actual just buying a vehicle, let's sell it to somebody. These look. Equipped. So what I mean is, is what's an expedica- expedition max and what's that used for and? What citizen is gonna go buy an expedition max that's got all the bells and whistles of. I don't know exactly what you're using that for. I think that's probably one of the, is that one of the unmarked cars for training purposes?
No, no, the expedition max will be assigned to the patrol captain, will also be dual purpose utilized for. Large scale events for a mobile command. But you you say that as though we didn't have these discussions. You say that as though this wasn't planned. It absolutely was discussed in great detail by the finance committee and knowingly discussed in a way. That we can postpone this because we don't expect delivery. The expectation was we would spend that seven hundred thousand dollars. In the next fiscal year. There, everyone knew that we could push that. However, there was a chance they may be, have to come in early. To the mayor's point, that would be money that we could save into the next budget year. Everybody knew upfront that this was a possibility. As soon as. I found out that they were going to be delivered early, that we would have to now deal with this in this budget year. I came forward. I didn't do it before you started calling me because I didn't have an opportunity or calling finance, I should say. Yeah, somehow your information got to you from my department before I was able to talk to my boss. But and then it made it to the Omaha World Herald before I got to talk to my boss, but. We had this worked out. We knew this was a possibility. This is not new information.
It is new to me.
What's that?
I it is new to to me. It feels new to me like I had seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Perhaps we uh. You have to vote on it, right? I mean, we can turn this down, they can put the cars back on the lot. So it's not a, it's not a commitment, right? Is that, did I understand that right? I mean, if you guys wanna vote to turn them down and we put our name back on the list, that's, that's your prerogative, so. And I got, I got, now I gotta, I didn't dawn on me, I'm gonna bring this up now. You said something when you first stepped up about Councilman Burns talking to. Rich, is that correct?
He began calling Ri- Rich's office the day after I got the email notifying me. That the vehicles had arrived. I hadn't even had an opportunity to talk to my boss yet.
He knows before I do and. The administrator, how does that happen, Thomas?
I don't have to answer that, but um, but it is my responsibility to.
Answer that, but I think you probably should.
No, Mayor hike.
Okay, alright.
Uh, just a couple of things. This, this won't be a funding issue, but I understand your process issue. So uh I can always go to the audit committee and the budget committee this year. And talk about changes to our procurement. Procedures, okay? Because right now, this didn't really violate any of those procedures, but I fully understand. You know, when it is a surprise. So. We'll, we'll talk about the process, but this is not gonna be a funding issue. But uh as the mayor just said. Right now, I think you're going to uh take a look at the vehicles and you might be able to uh decide. Tonight whether you wanna go forward with that or not, and then you always have. The last chance to say no is when they're on the claims. Yep, we've got them committed, but if you say no to paying the claims, we don't pay the vendor. It create. An interesting time for Annie and me, but. That is the the your final say, so you usually get to see them twice.
Thank you, Rich.
I still have one more question for chief. I, is there five people, ten people that know about this or? I guess I'd like a list of all the people that knew about it, cause I don't, I don't think that's right, so.
Yeah, no, I'm. It was limited to. A small number of people. I can get you those people if you'd like to know, but uh. We were receiving calls from the World Herald before I even was able to discuss it with my boss, so.
That's very interesting. I would like those names.
And I appreciate, you know, when when questions come in from council, I appreciate them coming in through through the, through the normal channels. I've had discussions with. Councilman Cook about these at length, provided a three page document outlining. Every vehicle, where it was gonna go, how we would shuffle vehicles, the mileage of the vehicles that were being replaced. Status of our budget, all of those things, so I appreciate that conversation.
Thank you, you're doing an outstanding job.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Any other questions? So on sixteen B, um, there's no open hearing. We got a motion by Cook, second by Welch. To approve, um, seeing no further discussion from the council, uh please vote.
We have four yes votes, one no vote with Councilman Burns voting no. Motion carries.
Did you say three yes votes? Four, okay. Then that up, so thanks. Sixteen C, recommendation to approve the amended budget request by South Sarpy Wastewater Agency to bring the budget into line with work required to complete the project. And operate the agency. You have a motion? Councilman Welch.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve item sixteen C, second.
Motion by Welch, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Sixteen D, approve the amended employee handbook and authorize the mayor to sign the contract for the Bellevue University Campus at Work Program. Do I have a motion? Councilman Welch.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve item sixteen D, second.
Motion by Welch, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna make a quick comment. I think it's a great program. Maybe it'll, it'll uh push some people, maybe that have been on the fence of going back to school or going to school for degree. And I also just wanna say that so that everybody knows here, we are also in this vote, including our part time employees. Being able to receive this benefit also. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Motion by Welch, second by Burns, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item seventeen, administration reports, comments must be limited to items on the current reports. December and January reports are attached. Are there any comments or questions? Councilman Prester.
Thank you, Mayor. I I would like to see if we could get an update on the drilling for the cable, fast wire and some of the other. Companies and how that's going. Uh, we've gotten some complaints still. We have people that want the opportunity to have. More competition, but they may not be the same people that are dealing with the problems, so. If you would, Jim, please.
Sure. So Fast Wire is the only one working in our community right now. Uh, we have two other providers that are probably coming in behind them. But they haven't pulled permits. We have one that hasn't signed their final contract. So those will be future work throughs, but with Fast Wire, if you recall when we met with them, they had some very specific requirements from us as to how to operate. Within the the right of ways and in the easements. And one of the key things that we'd ask them to do is communicate to the residents. That gets a little sticky because you have a locator service that goes out and generally that locator service, you have. M U D marks are their own and you have another one that marks other pieces of it, so you have quite a few out marking it. And then there's a timeline after they mark that, that gives us, not us, but Fast Wire the time to get in, start. The boring and digging. If they're not timed together, then they have to come back and relocate. So in most cases, to get a notice out to the public is generally probably a seven to ten, ten day window. So sometimes the public is seeing. The locating services marking and flagging everything before Fast Wire could communicate. Now what Fast Wire started out with was a door hanger. A lot of our residents said they didn't see it, a lot of them did see it.
Now what Fast Wire started out with was a door hanger, um, a lot of our residents said they didn't see it, a lot of them did see it. It probably wasn't as clear as what it should have, you know, outlined what to expect. I know my neighborhood was done, first thing I went and checked is I had a door hanger. But that's problematic, because a lot of us don't use our front doors, we use our garage for entry, so some dialogue went back and forth about how we communicate this. So what Fast Wire is committed to now is to put a direct mail to all the residents, timing as to when they start working in their neighborhood. And it's probably gonna be a seven-day, ten-day window based on when the locators are coming in. They, we just, and I I'll forward out the letter that Fast Wire is gonna send out, I don't know, did you share that with them? Have we shared that with the council, Annie?
I have not sent it.
Okay, so we've agreed upon what they should communicate, and the backside for us is our. Main issue is you put it back like the way you found it, so if you dig a hole. And you take the sod out, get the dirt back in, and now sod this time of year, they'll put the dead sod back on it. So in the spring, they're gonna have to come back out and work it, sprinkler systems are gonna be the same, um, there's a lot of discern on if they do bust a sprinkler system. That when and who, so Troy from X two, who has been out, and I've been with Troy on some of these household calls. He's got a software program he runs, so whenever I visit you as a resident, if you got a sprinkler problem, if I've hit your. In these cases, they're fixing the electronic dog, dog fence immediately, we saw one in Trigaron where they did that. Um, and it wasn't done properly, so we asked them to do that again, um, but Troy's setting those in motion, he's got a landscape company and a sprinkler company. And they're gonna start in the spring, and people wanna know, well, what does that mean, March to June, um, weather's gonna dictate that, because they're gonna have to charge their their sprinklers. So we are working extensively with them as to how and when they communicate to the residents. I can tell you that a lot of people don't wanna box in their front yard. And that's been one of our leading complaints, that one box, that one tower, which is about three feet tall. Serves eight homes, so you're not gonna see eight boxes, in some cases, you may see four holes in your yard. But they're manually digging to find where the electrical comes in, where the water comes in, so they're not striking that with the boring machine. Um, I was out in Trigaron, she thought she was gonna get four boxes, and it was, those will all be refilled and restored to what they should look like. They will have one box, that box is in her front yard, we actually, contractor on site was real diligent, we ended up moving that box back three feet for her. So we could relocate her sprinkler head, and they were gonna do it that day, now, the resident wanted to charge up the system, it was like, no, you have to wait till spring. Cause otherwise you're gonna have busted pipes, so we see that when they turn these on in the spring, they're, we're gonna find busted heads or lines that may have leaks in it. They will repair those and they'll do that expeditiously, so if Troy's got a hundred people in queue. If Millard Sprinkler feels they can get to that within a reasonable timeframe, they'll just stay with them, but let's say that he's got a thousand people in queue, and I don't anticipate that. Um, he'll add additional additional companies to help contract to get that done, same with landscape, um, like in my front yard. I see a little dirt around the box I have, um, they are either gonna seed it or sod it. But they gotta wait till spring to come back and do that, and they have a solid commitment to do that, and we'll be their watchdogs on that. Um, when you consider front yard versus backyard, we had a lot of dialogue with Fast Wire on the front yard versus backyard. And the backyard discussion was, they're gonna have to remove fences to go through those backyards, those backyards already have utilities in them. So to bore next to those would have been very difficult, they probably would have struck more lines in the backyard. And if you have pets, and I take your fence down, and what we're finding is like one day Fast Wire is out digging, the next day it's twenty below, they pull their crews. Well, imagine if that fence was down, that crew would be out, and if you had a pet, it'd be even a larger inconvenience, so the front yard is probably the most expeditious. There's discussions that we've ruined home values, um, took a couple of pictures today at lunch, there's a nine hundred thousand dollar house that has a utility box and three. Other providers, which would be Century Link and Cox and somebody else, Fast Wire hasn't hit theirs yet. Smackdown on the side of their house, uh, that house has gone up in value every year, so it's not, we just don't see that being a decline in value. What you do see is that the service that they're going to see, whether it's Fast Wire or ALO, you guys are aware of, have signed a, an agreement with us. And the third provider, you're gonna get a heck of a choice, and you're gonna get a lot of competition and probably better pricing. And it's not too dison anybody we have currently, but Fast Wire's fiber, Cox is coaxial cable, so you're gonna get a much better product in the end. And we did learn that in COVID, and that was the other side, we heard during COVID, everybody that worked at home, their service was horrible, cause everybody's stressing stressing that system. So if you get these competitors in there, you'll see a much better service provider to them. To date, we've got thirty-five hundred houses that have been provided with service, they'll probably start lighting some of those up. Uh, most, some up in Northwest Bellevue and a lot to the south, they're kinda, they have specific neighborhoods they start in. I think ALO would say that they build out from a hub, Fast Wire is looking at where they strategically can get the fastest response to get, you know, the most people signed up. And then they'll move through over the course of the summer, and we've got thirty thousand houses they're gonna have to to light up here, so we're gonna have a fun year here, but. From the city's role, and a lot of people, when they buy a house, and you guys are realtors, you can, when you sign off on your agreement, it talks about the easements. But people don't realize what that easement means, so whether it's us, O P P D, M U D, when they come through, they have the right to be in that easement. Our our play is to make sure that they restore the yards to what what they look like, and the utility boxes that go in front. Are engineering thing for them as to how they serve those homes, so that location of that uti- utility box may not really thrill a lot of people, but. You know, they don't put it in my yard, put it in my neighbors, well, you could just hip hop all your way back down to the back, and it'd be right back in your yard again, so. If there's some things that X two can come and help with, with the residents to help move that box or relocate it, if that capability is there, but in most cases, it won't be. We've had several gas lines hit over the course of the last couple of weeks, and that gets a little complex, uh, I was in Trigaron where when they hit one. Where the sod was taken out, where the gas lines were marked, there's no paint on that. So the gas line shows that it's going across the street from where the gas line should be. What we found is when the contractor installed the M U D gas line, there is a loop in there, and that loop's not seen when they load it, cause they find where they think the line is. So the contractor that we have is digging where the loop is, and that loop's not identified. So it's cold ground, they're shoveling it out manually to get to the bottom, so they can see where that line is, so they can bore. And it's, as Doug would say, sometimes you can't tell if it's frozen grass, um, if if it's a frost side, so. Are they hitting something that's frozen, or are they hitting a pipe, and by the time they figured it out, they struck a line. So if they are doing multiple damages within these neighborhoods, we have the capability of finding them, um, up to five hundred dollars per hit. Yeah, because we gotta put a fire crew out there, and we have to monitor it until it's stabilized. If we find that they're at fault with that, uh, we will find them, and then the other side, if they don't restore these. Um, Russ and I spent a lot of time, Doug, we've driven through after they're done in multiple neighborhoods, you can't even tell they've been there. I don't, I used to not pay attention to where the utility boxes are. And now I'm driving around looking, and there's a lot of the utility boxes are in the front yards, and it's, the older neighborhoods, everything was strung above, or everything is going underground. And that gets a little more complex as to how they install that, so, uh, we're doing our best to, A, make sure they communicate with the residents, and B. Make them comfortable that they will get their yards restored, um, we're encouraging the landscaper on those boxes if they wanna. Not see them in their front yard, but I think our mayor has four in his front yard, um, we're not, but those are existing, so he'll have five probably next, but. Um, they're out there, and it's, they're in the easements, and they have the right to be in those easements, and we do our best to work our way through it, so we're not ignoring. And we're answering every resident, just in the end of the day, if you don't want the box. I can't, I I'm not gonna be able to relocate that box based on what their engineering are, and it's a little more complex for them, and I'm probably simplifying it, but. Um, bore you to death when they start explaining that to us, but I think, um. We get through Fast Wire, ALO will be coming in right behind, so.
I just know, Mr. Risto, that I had a neighborhood that contacted me with regards to this, and. Um, the, one of the neighbors called Troy to come and meet, and he answered all their questions, they were totally settled down with it. Um, there was an opportunity that they could move the box to where the other utility boxes were, and these people had some nice landscaping around it, and so. He was able to move that, and that most of it was just that mushroom thing that they talk about, it's, you can put. You can, it's pretty much buried, and you can put, um, mulch over the top of it.
Agitation boxes, it's small.
Yeah, very small, and then, um, they notified me that there was a. A person from Fast Wire that was walking through the neighborhood, knocking on doors. To let them know that they were gonna be coming through, and one of the neighbors said, I have the text of everyone and on this street, I'll be happy to. Let them all know, and and they they were fine with it, so, it was a little glitchy when it first started, and then once they, um. Identified that there was some glitches, and they brought Troy on board, it's, for me, it seems like the phone calls have. Cut way back, because they're they're really addressing it.
What gets lost in a lot of this is probably three months after I was hired to become Public Works Director. Uh, a current provider came to my office and sat down with me and my staff, and. They offered to, uh, put cable fiber in all of Bellevue. For the minimal price of fifteen million dollars, so we said no, and we waited. And now we've, we're having the entire city of Bellevue wired one time. Probably at least twice and possibly three times at no cost to our citizens, and that gets lost in the shuffle. But we would have been going through this same process, had we allowed the current provider. To install the same fiber optic capabilities, and then we would have paid him fifteen million dollars. So we could still take the phone calls we're taking today, and and I empathize with the people who are upset. And with people who are worried about their yards, um, but as Bellevue modernizes, and to be. To to get at home values, if you don't have fiber cable available, what does that do to your home value? So these are all vast improvements, and I I want. The citizens and the council to know that instead of spending fifteen million dollars. We have fifteen million dollars to spend somewhere else and more productively, while the private sector is taking care of this, so I hope that's helpful.
I think it all was helpful, and I appreciate what you say, Doug, and Jim, you gave a very thorough explanation, which. I hope the public sees when they view the meeting, unfortunately, they may not stick around this long. But you touched on all of the issues, one being, is my yard gonna be repaired, is the sprinkler and the damage gonna be done? Can the box be moved to the backyard, can you do things through the back rather than the front? I I think you addressed all of those, and and you did it in a a good way, they even personalized it. Cause you're in the same situation, having it done in your yard as well.
You know, and and I I can tell you from mine, I came home, and the entire neighborhood is flagged. First thing I'm thinking, well, nobody's talked to me, but there in our front door is a giant door hanger. The door hanger wasn't really descriptive, and that started another conversation of, don't you think we ought to share this? And I think what was more important to us, what they put in the letter, is what to expect. Uh, last thing you wanna do is come out in the morning, you see a crew out there terrorizing your neighborhood, as some of them will project it, and it is, it's ugly, I mean, there's a lot of dirt. There's times that, um, we got one crew that puts all their dirt on a tarp, another crew doesn't, so each crew kind of. Operates a little bit differently, but when they clean up, I was out on a Friday night, and the guy's raking their yard, and I thought, well, I still have leaves in my backyard, so maybe they could come do it, but. They're literally doing their best, and you get dirt on a sidewalk this time of year, you can't take a pressure washer to it. Troy told me he got this flamethrower thing, and he goes, but then I'm gonna burn their grass, it was like, they will come back in the spring, and they will clean that up, but they can't get that dirt off that sidewalk, so. Some of that's a little muddy right now, um, but they are, they are very respectful, every, the two supervisors that we engaged with on that one in Trigaron. I mean, they were so diligent with the residents, so when they're telling us that. Um, they don't speak English, or they're not responsive, we don't see that, and we're, I mean, we are in every neighborhood, and we just don't have enough staff to be at every hole they dig. But when we do go in there, the crews we're dealing with, including Troy, and I tell you, I don't want Troy's job, plain and simple, because. He has a lot to deal with, but we had some that said he wasn't returning his call, and he's been on site, and he's going through his cellphone. And he goes, we had one that said he didn't, she called him twice, he never answered, so he's rolling through, and he can't find her number. So then at the end of the meeting, he said, well, if you have a problem, call me, do you have my number? She goes, no, I need to write that down, and we're all looking at her, so. It's convenient to say that we're not responsive, I think on the news tonight, the guy tried to dial the eight hundred number for Fast Wire. It was right around four o'clock, nobody answers, um, but Troy does get back to you, Troy is our front person. We've had some dialogue, if if they call Lisa's office, they call mine, they call the mayor's, they call Doug. We're gonna move it to Troy, because Troy's gonna be the one that solves the problem, so if you have a busted sprinkler head, Troy's gonna come out, look at it. Put it in the software to program it in for repair, in some cases, the one in Trigaron, they rerouted her sprinkler. Line that day to go on the other side of the box, so she'd get her ninety degrees, just told the resident, just wait till spring to open it up. Uh, my neighbor, I walked across the street the other day to get mail, and it's his sprinkler head's busted, and I can't wait to talk to. Strakota, but it's, you see some of this, and people are gonna see those in spring, these guys will respond, we've heard that we've cracked driveways and sidewalks. If that's occurred, we're asking them to reach out to Fast Wire, let them know, and they'll get that in the hopper to ensure that all those repairs are done. Our job would be, if they don't do it, then we will hold them accountable, but from a public image standpoint, I talked to their marketing company too. About how they communicate, they want these people as customers, so in the end, if they don't do their job and restore those. I wouldn't hook up service with them either, so it's, they they understand that, and they wanna be diligent, and. Correct me if I'm wrong, Doug, we've never, I have not yet to see somebody that hasn't been responsive to the customer complaint, it's just the bottom line is. The box is the biggest issue, I don't want that in my yard, and in some cases, we really don't have a way to resolve that, and it's. Because the way they engineer the other eight houses, that's the best place to put it. Um, but what we are encouraging, they have the right to landscape around it, you see some of that winter grass you can plant around it, and it stays all winter, it's like. That high wheat grass or whatever, um, those keep those pretty much well hidden all year round. So there's a lot of options, um, I've got a huge electrical box in my backyard, I planted shrubs around, and they told me that if they ever had to work on it, they'd yank my shrubs out, and I thought, well, I only paid three dollars for them. So I'll do it again, um, in most cases, even these boxes, if they landscape around it, they're just gonna lift that box up if there's something to repair inside, so they won't even work with the landscape. Unless they have to dig it out, which we don't see that as a frequent thing, so we we feel good, it's just, it's, it's very disruptive to anybody's neighborhood.
Um, it's temporary though.
They get through this, uh, usually they're in and out within about a week at most, most areas, and when you drive back through, you just don't see it, um. But if they feel something's out of sorts, all they gotta do is reach out, and we'll make sure that it's put on the list to take, be taken care of. And they're gonna do it as timely as they can, this won't stretch out for a long time, so that's our job, is to hold them accountable, make sure they do it, so.
I will attest that we we have, every complaint I get, it goes to Jim, and. I go to a lot of the appointments with him and Doug and Troy, um, we we reach out to everybody, uh, there might be. Say there's a dozen people out of the thirty-five hundred that were really upset with the pedestal, and after we talk to them, there's a couple that. Absolutely don't like it, but the other ones, they know what's going on, and it's been explained to them, so.
And and it's helpful to me too, to know the personal involvement, I mean, this is taking up a lot of city time, staff time. You, both of your times and direct contact and support to make sure we follow through, and as you point out. There are some options there of fining if the follow-through doesn't meet those standards that we've set, so. I I hope the public is able to hear some of this, in addition to the ones that have been directly contacted to hear it.
And we have, so we, and we just added this, so we have an interactive map that shows where they're at, that was something we'd asked them for early on. It took them a while to get that to us, but that'll be updated frequently, so it'll show where they've been and where they're going. And then two for us, then we can kinda track whether or not they're communicating with the residents, um, and that's our key, is to make sure they tell them what to expect, and then. You know, how they resolve any issues they have, and then we follow up in the end, um. On a flip side, we've got a lot of positive comments, those never seem to rise to the top, people are excited to have options, and it's. They're thankful it's in there, uh, you've got some neighbors going at each other, cause this neighbor says, I really want it, and this neighbor says, no, but. It's it's, again, it's it's a little disruptive for them, and I think we sympathize with that, and. In the end, just put it back the way you found it, I mean, that's the easiest way to say it, and we'll hold them accountable for that.
I can get far more context on, when's it coming, when can I get on to, so it's, the public wants it, it's just trying to get it there the best way.
Getting it through, thank you for the update, but more so, thank you for all the hours, the time, and the dedication, and the trips out into the field. To get it done, I appreciate it.
Well, the other day, when one was really kinda lighting me up, I thought, the fire department's there, I thought, I'm just gonna lay down and pretend I'm having a heart attack, and I can get out of here, but I.
Tempting.
But it's, you know, they're, can certainly appreciate it, a lot of them, once you go out, you talk to them, they 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 chill pretty quickly. But it's, you know, they're, can certainly appreciate it. A lot of them, once you go out, you talk to them, they, they chill pretty quickly.
Good communication. Yeah.
Oh, Councilman Cook.
I'd like to just make a couple more comments. Um, well, some of us are getting emails on this. Uh, and sometimes they're sent to all six of us or, and maybe even your staff. So I would just ask if you get an email on this, just so that someone knows, someone's looking at it. If you get an email and, you know, if, maybe if Jim's name's on it, maybe call Jim, say you, you're gonna respond, you want me to respond. But let's make sure that we respond to them some way because I, I mean, I get an email and that they may say the neighborhood they live in, then I'll look at my map, say, well, that's, you know, over here. I, I just think as, to be respectful, if you get an email and it was sent to everybody, I think whoever's ward that is, I'm asking, you know, I can't tell anybody to, what to do, is maybe make contact with Jim, maybe through an email. Have you dealt with this person? Have you contacted them? Cause I got an email that these guys had already probably been out there at the house and I'm getting emails upset about it. So it, it helps him too to know that me, you know, I, I get the email just sent to me and, and stuff. And then I'm responding. Then, you know, I sent it to Jim and Jim goes, hey, we, we're already involved in this. So I, I think just as a courtesy to make sure, yeah, to, if you get an email to say, hey, Jim, have you guys made contact with his family or not? Or I can respond to him or whatever, so that we don't have people hanging.
And we're working for, so like if you guys all get one, um, and if we're not on it and if we are, we should copy on it. But we're looking for one unified response. What we are finding is there's a lot of, uh, urban legends going around out there that people will say, well, I talked to a Fast Wire engineer and they told me that the city decided to save money and forced us into doing this this way. Well, who was that engineer? Because that's not the case. So what we like to do is be able to unpin those on truths, I guess you could say, and then give them the facts and work it through. But we would just like one unified response. So we're not five or six people saying, well, here's what I think or here's what I know. And then we, we will respond to everybody that hits us, but we like to just keep it in a camp. We have some that are threatening to sue. We had one call Silver Service Commission or Public Service, Public Service Commission, if I got that right. We were able to work through that. Um, they know what the, the easements and right of ways rules are. It's like they just, they like to threaten. Uh, we just had the media and today for Channel Seven and Channel Six did some interviews. And if we can just keep it in a bucket and that way they get the right response. And I'm not saying we're, we're miscommunicating, we just wanna make sure they get the right information. And then drive them to where the end of the day is who to contact if this doesn't work out for you. Cause like I said, our goal's not to ruin their homes or their yards, it's to make sure it gets put back to normal. So we will.
And, and there are some responses, when people don't understand the right of way, there are responses that, I, I don't know who wrote them, Annie, Doug or whoever, that are solid to say, hey, this is a right of way, this is what our easement, this is what we can, can't do. And so that, because people are, they ask question, well, can you be in my yard ten feet, five feet, two feet or four feet? Well, I, I don't know. I, I know Doug sent me a copy of it, but I don't know who created it. Yeah, but the, there are some responses that they can just send right back to that person and pretty much answer their questions. Couple other things, I don't know how many companies we wanna let come in. I think we gotta get to the point where we've got in our minds, say Cox, Fast Wire, Alloy, XX, how many? How many do we want? Because I don't wanna go through this a lot more. I think Don and I are probably experiencing the pain now of where they're just putting in the service, Fast Wire is. But I think we, we need to at least come to a thing that, what's the magical number of how many do we want? Uh, and then on the other side of that is, can we do something when a new neighborhood is being built? Can we, I don't know how you do it. I'm not an engineer, but it sure seems like when they put water and all that other stuff in, electricity, can we take an outlot and put a big box and run every fiber optic to every house? And so then when they want service, Fast Wire or Cox or whoever, whoever, they just gotta get their power to that box. Maybe, no, I'm not an engineer. I'm sure people in this room would say, Paul, that's not gonna work. But can we get some of this done more than one? Cause I don't know when Cox put mine in, maybe when my house was built, because I'm not the original owner. But can we get some of this done more than one in during the house construction?
Well, new subdivisions and we have talked to all of the providers that are currently pinging us that as we get into new subdivisions that are being planned, they wanna be in there with us ahead of time. Um, right now we have three suitors, I guess you could say. We had two additional ones that Doug and I have talked to and just said that you're gonna get to a point of dilution. So you, you have Cox and Century Link and these other three, so you literally have five in there. They're gonna be, it's, it's gonna be a slugfest in the end, right? So, which will be great for the consumer. But I think we're at that point now where I don't think we wanna, there's two more that were knocking on our door and it was like, we're just, we can't do it, um, just because of the volume that's already in here. So I, we're already trying to reason through that.
Good. And, and my experience, like Jim's saying, my experience was I saw colored flags and color markings in my yard. Of course, I heard things. Uh, I don't do really social media, but from my kids and my wife and family and friends. So then I saw them coming closer to my street. And literally I came home one night, things looked like, things exploded in the neighborhood, looks horrible. And I will tell you, the next night I came back and it was almost all the homes on my street. It was almost back to normal. Now, they did come back and have to do a little digging here and a little dig, you know, a couple more things. But I'm telling you, it was almost a, I could say for surely a forty-eight hour turnover, but it was almost a twenty-four hour turnover to where it was back to normal. Uh, so it does look, and I can up, I can understand people being upset. The boxes, I've been telling people, they did this, it's all done. Because if you think I can move your box, that neighbor's not gonna want it and that neighbor's not gonna want it. So I tell people, I, I'm not getting involved in that battle because it's already decided, it's a done deal. If you get it, it's gonna be in your yard. You know, maybe they can move it four feet over.
Most of those are just because of engineering reasons.
Yes, and, and I tell people, it, it, it's all planned out. They're not going down a street trying to say, where should we, how do we do this? It's all mapped out, it's all planned out. And, you know, I mean, as they go into these neighborhoods, and I'm gonna tell you, I didn't like the twenty-four hours, but when I came back, it was like, wow, these guys did what they did. I mean, everything's back tucked in. I, I ended up with a ground level, um, oval type box in my yard or between me and my neighbor.
There's, there's some other discussion too, that they think that they're able to put these vaults in below ground instead of the towers. And the towers are there because one, they're easily accessible, but they don't, there's no way you can seal those underground vaults. So they're gonna take more water and more damage to the, the cable. So it's where the connections and stuff come in. So to bury them and to seal them is, it's a very expensive process, but the technology doesn't really exist. There's, again, there's people out there saying they can do this. They're telling us they can't and it's not a cost issue. It's a serviceability issue. So those towers, if you look, everybody's been using the towers for years. And I think it's, is when they go underground, it's gonna, it's gonna take more moisture than what you do above ground. So, um, it goes back to again, if these things, if you guys see these things that are coming to you, just throw it to us and we'll, we'll reply to them and we'll make sure that we keep them on track. And if people are having problems in their yard and, um, and they don't feel they're getting a resolution, let us know and we will, we will knock them out.
There is a good link to on, on the city's webpage as well. That's probably where I'd start sending them to, because there's a lot of information on that as well.
Good. I appreciate the discussion. I have one other issue then, but thanks for that. Uh, we have in past years, not so much recently, but had concerns with ambulance billing and not being able to recoup the amount of money that we're billing out on the current administrator's report for the month of November and December. There's six hundred and fifty thousand plus dollars that we have billed out that we're hoping people will pay. And that's money beyond insurance and beyond what's otherwise covered. So when we look at what we're taking in, it amounts to maybe fifteen thousand of that total amount. So there's a large gap between what we're billing out and what we're recouping. And over the years, we've had many discussions. Uh, we haven't had any in at least probably the last seven years that I know of. So it's been an issue that current council members are not as aware of and that has had a lot of input and a lot of changes. So rather than have staff come tonight, uh, Dee does the billing for us and she's worked an excellent job in improving things. But I ask her to give a brief outline that I'd like to read for the public to get some information because they're calling, giving her a hard time just not knowing the process or that they're responsible. And I would like for this time to be helping to educate not only us on the council, but people at home. And Dee Gray from the Rescue Fee Billing and Compliance in the Fire Department says, since twenty-ten, when Bellevue Fire became a career department, the rescue fee billing processes have gone through many changes, upgrades and set goals, always being to fill accurately and efficiently while bringing in the highest possible revenue from one of the city's income producing utilities. She relates it to a utility. It is a service that we're providing and somebody has to pay that service. If the person using the service doesn't, then everybody else has to subsidize it. The biggest hurdle we have had to overcome is explaining to the citizens of Bellevue that when you or a loved one are transported, there are fees that need to be paid. The majority of insurance policies cover a significant portion of these fees, but oftentimes the patient is responsible for at least some of the balance. The rescue squad is a mobile emergency room that comes to your home and offers you an emergency response and emergency care. It is not a convenient way to get to the hospital and emergency room. When patients abuse the nine-one-one system and use an ambulance this way, the insurance company will not pay, leaving the patient to pick up the fees. Medicare Advantage plans have become popular. And while covering patient care like original Medicare does, it leaves patients with not only a copay, but also a co-insurance of a significant amount when it comes to ambulance fees. This has been a frustrating and difficult lesson learned by Medicare beneficiaries. So I think some people have been confused and thought Medicare Advantage was a real strength and they're finding out it's not what they thought it was. The billing department, our Bellevue billing department collects insurance information and will file electronically to the companies the patient has coverage with through claims and are also sent to auto and workers' comp companies. If there is no insurance coverage, the patient is responsible and billed directly. The city is doing its best to recoup as much as we can from those other providers prior to ever doing this billing. But ultimately, the customer who got the service is responsible for that last amount. Immediately following the date of service and thereafter, on a monthly basis, a statement is sent to the patient. Insurance gets filed to the primary and secondary companies within thirty days of receiving coverage information. Follow-up procedures include phone calls, letters, and if necessary, correspondence from the city's legal office. The city has a special committee assigned that reviews cases. We, I think are going above and beyond and that special committee even considers hardship cases. But ultimately, the bill is due and payable beyond what insurance covers. So I hope people at home are getting information that they do owe. It's not just a paid service by all of the taxpayers of Bellevue. When you use that ambulance billing, it's your service that you're getting, you need to pay for it. Please do so. And I hope this is helpful to the council, the new council members especially, but also to those of us like the chief and other people at the fire department who've had to work through this year after year after year. Thank you.
Thanks.
And I sent a copy of that to all the council members as well. So you can share it as you get concerns or complaints with people too. It's a very concise and very clear outline that Dee, Dee put together and I thank her for that.
Thank you. I'm just gonna add to that, uh, since we're on ambulance, my wife and my mother both have used that service in the last eighteen months and that, those guys are professional gals. Um, that six twenty-five is well worth it when you need it, so.
Exactly.
But if you're using it for a taxi service to get to the hospital, it's probably, you're probably paying too much.
Quit.
All right. Seeing no other comments or questions, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Councilwoman Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make a motion that we adjourn.
Motion by Walsh, second by Preister. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.